Capron? Here. Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here. We stand for a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan Vandrick.
Is that?
Electronically.
Yes. Well, I would just like to say thank you to my boss, Jennifer McCabe. Couldn't be here, would likely say a few words. Opportunities Unlimited has been providing services for this rural community for over 25 years. Founded by the whole families who had children with brain injuries. We are a mission-based organization who serves over 200 individuals each year. Community brain injury in other special needs. We were diligently to provide excellent availability of residential services in our key homes located on the north side of the city. Dedicated to brain injury. We're in the process of opening a new home and line of service called Community-Based Neuro-Behavioral Reorganization Services. This will allow us to further support and continue to move care and provide for the needs within the state of Iowa. This is a newer line of service with a majority of services provided in Des Moines and northeast of Iowa. We're excited to open this new home and continue with our focus and success in serving those impacted by brain injury. In effort to promote awareness and prevention, OU also has created a program called Got a Brain, Give a Helmet. We have created a curriculum and program that is shared with the low schools and second graders. We follow up with an educational piece with an assembly and installation of helmets for students. We are thrilled this year through a grant provided by Jerry Queen that we're going to be able to supply each second grader at Sioux City in a helmet. We've been focused on that for years and Jerry Queen has really stepped up for us. We're proud of the work that our organization has done here at OU. We're grateful to have the support of so many in our community, including Shields and the student community foundation. We also want to thank our work.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will go to the Human Rights Commission. Billy Oeder. Billy here? Billy's having a hard time getting here.
Yeah, he is, isn't he?
Okay, Museum Board of Trustees, Ben Nesselhoff. There you are.
Ben?
Hi.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to, I think, continue to serve, right?
Yes. Ben Nesselhoff, I have been part of the Sioux City community for about six years now. I previously, well, I just finished a term on the Board of Trustees for the museum. Very much enjoyed it. I think that it's almost a disservice to call it a museum. I think there's so much more than that that happens there. It's really a celebration of the entire Siouxland community. Part of the reason that I was drawn to it was when I first came to Sioux City, I thought I should learn about my new hometown, and that was the best place to do it. I learned an awful lot, and I think that it really speaks highly of the community that we have such a wonderful jewel like that. So I'd like to serve another term.
Appreciate you being an advocate.
Thank you for the good work. Keep it up.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks, Ben.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Go to the consent agenda today where you've got items three through 11D. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll of call vote is asked or by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come forward as I read that item and state your name and address so it can be used in the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Reading of the City Council minutes of February 20th and 25th, 2019. Four is a resolution authorizing the police department to apply for a Traffic Safety Bureau grant. Five is a resolution approving the renewal option of the DPC for sodium hypochlorite solution.
Brad, just a quick question. I know we're extending this for a year rather than repeating it. Is there a reason that we ever don't do that? I mean, I guess if it goes really poorly, because since I've been on the council, it always seems that it's like, well, you give options to extend, you always end up extending.
Brad Pitt's Water Plant Superintendent. I believe the clause is in there that both parties have to agree, so we're not obligated to do so. Right. Some of them we do. We think this is a great contract right now with DPC. They do a great job. They deliver when we need them. Obviously, there's been other chemical contracts where that has not been the case, and we've opted to bid the very next year, so.
And you still think it's competitive pricing?
Absolutely.
That was all. I just wondered. Thanks, Brad.
You're welcome.
Six is a resolution approving a contract with the Professional Firefighters Association, Local Seven International Association of Firefighters. Seven is a resolution fixing an amount to be assessed in adopting the schedule of assessments for the right-of-way tree trimming program. Actions, eight are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. Items eight and B are resolutions approving partial settlement of tort claims. Number nine are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to sell 3299 Parkview Boulevard, the petitioner Habitat for Humanity. Items nine, B and E are resolutions setting dates of public hearings on urban renewal plan. B is the Teton Urban Renewal Project area. C is the CBD Urban Renewal Project area. D is the amended Donner Park Urban Renewal Project area. And E is the Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Project. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list and come forward if you have questions. Eleven are receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those, please come forward. How are we voting?
On your electronic vote panels, please. Five, zero.
Pass five, zero. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I don't know what that's all about.
I don't either. We're moving ahead. Twelve's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of the Hart Family Hotels for the purchase of land in the CBD Urban Renewal Area and authorizing agreements for the property at 100 Virginia and 100 Court Street. I'm not going to vote for that, so somebody else will have to move it.
Move that.
I'll second it.
Not going to work. Well, that's great. Four.
To one. I vote no, and I-
One. Mayor Scott voting nay.
Yeah, and I vote, I'm not voting for this, not that I have anything against Hart Family Hotels. I don't even know the people. But I, we don't give property tax abatement in Morningside for these rebates. We've had that same request, but if you do it downtown, and I think we have enough hotels going up downtown that we don't have to rebate anymore to get them to build, but I understand that it passes. Move on. Thirteen's a hearing and resolution for the issuance of GO bonds not to exceed $11,100,000. I'll move that.
Second.
Do you prefer I call?
Yes, I would.
Good. Tell me when you're ready and I'll-
I'm ready.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Fourteen's a hearing and resolution for the issuance of GO bonds not to exceed $1 million. I'll move that.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Fifteen's a hearing and resolution for the issuance of GO bonds not to exceed $850,000. I'll move that.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Sixteen's a hearing and resolution for the issuance of GO bonds not to exceed $550,000. I'll move that.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Seventeen's a resolution authorizing the issuance of $12,360,000 worth of GO bonds. I'll move that.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Eighteen's a hearing and resolution adopting the annual budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020 and for, and the fiscal year 2020 to '24 cap improvement project program, or improvement program. I'll move that.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Nineteen's an ordinance amending Chapter 2.04 of the municipal code to provide a new salary for the mayor and city council.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to amend that to $2,000 per council member or $10,000 total.
What did the council make now? I thought you made 10. Make 13 now.
No, she's saying 10 in addition.
Total cost.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I see what you're saying. Okay. I got you.
Right.
Second that, Alex?
Yes.
On the amendment, Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
No.
Moore?
No.
Scott?
I'm going to vote aye because I've clarified that the council does have the option to not accept the raise if they choose not to. So as long as there's flexibility, I'm not going to not vote for it.
So you're voting aye?
Aye, and I'm, now we have to do a motion for first reading.
Second.
On the first reading, as amended, Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
No.
Moore?
No.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I do not want to do any more readings though. Twenty's an ordinance amending Chapter 5.2 of the municipal code by increasing fees for solid waste collections. First consideration passed February 11th, 2019. Second consideration passed February 20th, 2019. I'm going to move, we defer because my understanding is the state's not acted yet, and once funnel week, this week, right?
Yes.
Friday, yeah, I think. I'll move we defer.
Second.
To next week.
Fourteenth of March?
No.
No.
The eleventh.
The eleventh. Oh, well, that was good math, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Good girl.
Hope that was private school.
The eleventh of March?
Yes. Go ahead.
Keith Baker, Sioux City. I talked to Jackie Smith today on this issue of the senior discount, and she says it really doesn't look too promising, so I maybe got a plan B here for you, just to think about, about an income-based guideline to qualify for the discount. What do you guys think? Other cities in Iowa do it.
Yeah, as soon as we vote, I'm going to ask Nicole to look into something in the next week, so.
Well, I've got a form here. Did you show the city council that form?
I emailed the council the form that you provided for Cedar Rapids.
Okay. So you guys know what it's-
Yeah, the problem for me is anybody can fill out a form when there's no, there's no checking that form. I'm more inclined to, if you qualify for property tax relief, I'm all for you getting, and I think we can do that, or not.
That's something we're looking into.
Okay, all right.
So you're talking about if I fall under, or me, whoever, under the new Iowa code, if their taxes exempt automatically qualifies for the discount on the-
That'd be my vote, but the city attorney has to make sure that's legal.
But that's what we're talking about?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
But another way is you could take the numbers, let's say somebody goes down to City Action Agency, qualifies under the, like the Mid-America Discount, electric and gas, wouldn't that be enough to qualify for the senior discount also if they pass that?
Don't know what, I don't know how, what their qualifications are, so I don't, I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't, I just don't know.
I think they're pretty much the same, Bob.
Okay. But I know if you qualify there, that you, you've got to prove it, so.
Well, they give you all the documentation that you have been through the program.
Okay.
And you have been qualified.
Okay.
I did that.
Okay.
So, you know, like I say, if you go up there and get qualified for it, that should be sufficient evidence.
Yeah, I guess I'd want to make sure what that means. I don't know what that means, but yeah.
Right.
The question's still-
Well, it's just something, something to look at, you know, think about.
Right.
You know, instead of blindsidedness, you know, just something, just something to think about.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else be heard?
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Vander Voort. I've lived at 30 Blackstone in Sioux City for, since 1991, and it was news to me when I started reading the newspaper to find out that for the last 12 years, I've been paying too much from a garbage disposal. So I don't know whether it's fair or not fair to give old people a break, although I'll tell you that tomorrow is my garbage day, and for the third time this year, I won't be putting out either my recyclable or my garbage beach because we just don't have that much, and I think that's probably the same with most people my age. But if you're going to have a discount for regardless, if it's over 65, when do you let the people over 65 know this? I mean, I think Bob knows I keep track of the city pretty well, and I did not know this. It's not that the $2 bothers me, it does bother me bad, but if you're going to have a discount over 65, you should let people know that there's a discount when they're over 65. The same way you let people know if they're a vet, they can get a break on their property tax. And I'm also a vet. I've never asked for that property tax break before because I thought, when I was in the Army, they paid me. Those checks cashed. I thought we finished pretty even when they gave me an honorable discharge. So anyway, my issue is who besides me who's 65 didn't know this?
I would say at least 60% of the people.
And that's what's wrong with it.
Right.
Not whether it's a discount or not.
That's exactly, that, there are so many other discounts we don't know about, too, and that's exactly what the senior advisory committee's working on. That was at the top of their list, to identify all discounts for seniors and where they apply and when they apply. And so they've undertaken that, that-
Well, it's probably rude to point this out to the city manager, but there's probably space on this bill to point that stuff out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. So we've got a motion. Call, roll, please.
Yes, we do. Greckin? On the deferral?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
I've got another comment. This gentleman just said he didn't know about these discounts. If you Google "discount for senior citizens in Sioux City, Iowa," or wherever, hundreds of it hits come up. I mean, a lot of them you got to go looking for, just a suggestion. You know, these people that don't know this stuff.
Right.
That's how I found out a lot, about a lot of things that are offered to you, because these, these places aren't going to advertise, you know, we give discounts here and there. You got to go looking for them, and that's what they want you to do. And if you've got ambition enough to go looking for it, more likely they're going to give it to you because you've got enough ambition to go find it.
Yep.
That's the trick.
You know, I totally agree with you. I think the only problem we have is some of these older folks don't understand what Google even is, so, you know.
That's part of the problem, yeah.
Well, go to the library and find out. They'll help you.
Well, I, well, I work with older people and it doesn't work that way.
I think it's a challenge.
Yeah, it is a challenge.
I think it's a challenge, and I know Dan and the senior advisory committee have been really dedicated to looking for that. That was something that was pointed out on the survey, so I think that that's something that will continue to be brought up and see how we can reach that population.
There's a lot of ways, though, you can save money if you go look for it.
Yeah, that's true.
And they're going to make you go look for it. There is one alternative. You just follow me around because everywhere I go, they say, "You're a senior," right? Well, just follow me around. You know, though, my philosophy is you're not going to get a discount unless you actually apply for it. If you don't, you know you're not going to get it.
Yeah.
I've been told no a lot of times, but I've been told yes a lot of times, too.
That's right. All right.
Appreciate it, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Twenty-one's a resolution amending a position classification manual by renaming the positions, titles, and job descriptions for seasonal labor. Three is an EFD labor. I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Twenty-two is a resolution approving a salary schedule for seasonal personnel. I'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Citizen concerns. Are there any citizens to be heard in the audience? If so, please come to the microphone. Being none, council concerns. I have none. Thank you.
I just want to mention the NAIA starts this week, and it will start on Wednesday. The banquet's tomorrow night, and it should be a great week for the city.
Go ahead.
Basketball, by the way.
Go ahead. All right. As if it's surprising, I have a few different things.
No, really?
Yeah, right? Just a few.
Hey, we got to leave, Bob.
Just a few. We got a little time. The first one that I wanted to recognize is I see Joshua Shonda in the audience. He's a student at Morningside College and also is now an intern with multiple in the Environmental Services Office, so just wanted to welcome him. I know we have other interns as well that are going to be working with the project, so just wanted to point that out, and I really appreciate the council's support of that, that endeavor with interns, and I think Mr. Patmore's been doing a great job of making sure staff knows about it and is supportive of-
They're all Morningside kids, so.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I-
Connections. It's all about connections.
Anyway, exactly. I mean, if you know people and they come ask me about internships. So the next thing that I wanted to talk about was a concern that was brought to my attention was the sidewalks down around the convention center for the home show, and it wasn't our sidewalks. We did a good job of cleaning that up, and I talked to Rick about that. The concern that I had was adjacent to the Riviera, Club Riviera. That whole stretch from the parking ramp to the corner where they would cross was just completely ice and snow packed.
On the, on Riviera property?
Correct.
Okay.
And the same was true on the Howard Johnson side. Now granted, if you're taking that parking ramp, you can use the Skywalk, but it was just a concern of mine. A couple of people came up to me and said that they really worried about falling, so they just walked in the street.
Well, if somebody go out and inspect, and then we'll follow up.
And I took pictures in case you need them.
Want to email them to me?
Did they contact the owners or operators?
I do not believe so.
Sometimes it would be a good idea for-
Okay. No, I agree. It was less us and more of the property owners. The last thing that I wanted to bring to the council's attention was I had Mark Smith as well as Jan, right? I'm saying that correctly? The new environmental engineer down at the wastewater treatment plant come and present Morningside College. They were talking to some students that are really interested in sustainability, and I, for one, was extraordinarily proud. I thought that Mark and Jan did a great job talking about the endeavor that the city is taking on and how, just how we're really being a leader in that forefront, and I was, I was just really thankful that they were willing to come and speak with our students, and a couple of members of our staff showed up as well, so thank you. And I thought they did a great job, so I wanted the council to know that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
The only thing I have is to thank the mayor and the council on the job we did with the budget this year with the capital improvements program. We'll have the operating budget come to us later. Is that right?
It was today.
It was today. They were combined.
They were combined.
Oh, they are combined?
Yeah.
Oh, annual budget for the fiscal year. I got it, yeah. So both of them are combined, so if I read that right, there's mention there's no decrease in the taxes for residential, but actually what we want to brag about is there's no increase for residential properties, decrease for commercial properties of $35 per 100,000. So I just-
The journal printed that.
I was going to say, you would think that would be a positive headline we could-
They did. They did that.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just really proud of that fact, and we worked hard to get there, and all of the directors and the city manager worked very hard to get to that spot as well. And I know we get criticized a lot of times over the years of taxes going up, but, but this is a case of where we really held the line, and Donna, thank you for your good work on that, for, for the recommendations and suggestions that you made to council and to the mayor. It was very helpful. The whole process was very helpful, so I thank you. And I've got a really good excuse for forgetting that we did both budgets, but I won't get into that right now.
It was his anniversary this weekend. I didn't forget.
It wasn't real clear?
It's his first anniversary.
eight hours and at minus 10 fixing water mains, and then you want to tell me that they're a different class of employees, just, the state legislature needs to look at what they've done with collective bargaining and that in the state because those guys were unbelievable. It was so darn cold, I don't know how they got the work done, but they, uh, and that, you know, I think he said that was his third break. Yeah, I think at that point, it was like his third break he was working on that.
Those crews have had a rough week.
Yeah, yeah. I agree with you, Mayor.
And, and to be out there all night doing that's incredible, so they need to be, I would have gotten coffee, but they were so busy, I knew they'd been cold by the time that, by the, by the time that they got to drink it. And then Rhonda and Pete and I and Alex got to be at the change of command, which is a, you know, it's a historic event, it's a very meaningful event and, and I think we need to publicly thank Colonel Christensen for his leadership and wish, uh, Colonel Muckey, who is an East High Sioux City kid, the best of luck, but, uh, I don't think the guardian will notice any hiccups. They're under good leadership and they've been under good leadership, so we wish them the best. With that, I move, we adjourn.
If I can add?
Yeah.
Can I just add one thing? One thing I forgot that's on the calendar, if you haven't heard, is like the senior discount, a lot of people miss things. Um, the Immigration Forum is taking place at the Public Museum this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. So it should be a great conversation, but I would encourage all those to attend. Immigration Forum, 6:00 PM on Wednesday.
And I believe there's a joint Historic Preservation City Council meeting tomorrow at noon.
I, I just want to echo the mayor's comments and share with you some statistics that were shared with Rhonda and I, um, at the Public Works Team meeting, when you talk about the effort that the employees are doing, the utilities boys, um, men and women, I assume, but in the month of February, 27 water main breaks, 16 sewer backups and 10 main backups. That's a significant number and the effort that they're putting out to help everybody get back online and for the system to work properly is, is, uh, I had one two blocks north of my house water main, I shared with them at the meeting today and my wife said to make sure to share that, uh, she was very appreciative of the work and the same thing, bitterly cold and they were out there working hard.